You hear me okay, Michael?
Hi, councilman. Yes, I can hear you just fine.
Hello, Michael.
Councilman Escobal, can you hear me? This is Michael.
Michael, this is Tom Seagrave. I can hear you.
Thanks, Councilman Seagrave. I appreciate that.
Michael, Jennifer, anybody down there hear me?
And we can hear you. Can you not hear us? Is your volume down on your computer maybe?
Jennifer, can you send him a text? Okay, like to call the work session of the city council to order November nineteenth. We're going to be looking at climate wellness through soil health. And I think we got Mr. Nash there be doing a presentation. Are you guys ready?
We are. And and if with y'all's permission, I'm gonna kind of turn the intro over to Dale. And I've been talking about this for some time years. And I'll let him kind of introduce that. And then John Robitaille, who is our CEO of the Carbon Asset Network, will kind of jump in from there. If that's with your permission, we'd like to move forward in that manner.
Okay, go ahead, Dale.
And just to give you a little bit of background about what we're up to. So Marvin and Encore Green approached the chamber, goodness, maybe two years ago now. And we started talking about a problem that we talk about in Wyoming all the time, right about carbon capture and the problems that have happened with carbon capture over the years and the challenges to carbon capture. And we began talking with the Wyoming Stock Growers, who also have this as an issue. Trinda had to step out, but she was with us and they're outstanding partners in this whole desire to move forward. But really, at the end of the day, our carbon issues really come down to us being able to cap- capture the carbon and stored in the soil. For so those of you who remember social sciences or science in seventh, eighth grade, talk about just the natural and that how things happen naturally, right? We increase plant growth and and plants capture carbon. However, that really starts with soil health, right? So the soil's ability to 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 take up carbon and how much carbon it can take up. That's how how we really solve the problem. So we've all thought about this from a cap and trade point of view. I remember twenty years ago being involved under the Bush administration and right before, where we were talking about, okay, companies need to re- to make their carbon footprint smaller. So we tried this carb- carbon credits thing where, hey, we'll help 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 ranchers and help folks in agriculture be able to store carbon for us and take that off of our books. We never really were able to figure that figure that out. So the exciting thing that this company is doing is they they've kind of figured that out, right? We so we've got ways to measure carbon in the soil. We've got a plan laid out and to be able to pay landowners for those efforts to 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 capture that carbon and to put it put it in their soil. We've got plan laid out for the water that we're using regularly, how we can use that water to increase that capacity for land to store. And of course, what that all means is that we have more plant growth because of the improved soil health because of the carbon and be and be able to move forward. The thing that we had not figured out for a long time that I give Marvin and Jeff and the other folks that have been involved is how do we turn that into something, a sustainable financial model that works for everyone? And so they started working with blockchain technology and trying to figure out, okay, how do we make use this blockchain technology that we're celebrating in the state of Wyoming? Right? It's our two of our biggest issues, carbon capture and blockchain technology. How do we bring this in together to create a climate wellness idea that allows us allows everyone in the system to benefit? So that piece of it got figured out. The last piece of the puzzle was figuring out a government entity that would basically certify to certify those that that carbon capture. It's amazing to me that no government has been able to do it. We've tried it through federal and state government for a long time. Everybody boxed at it. I think it's just the political environment we live in. I think we have no doubt that we live in a pretty tumultuous political time. So we decided a few months back, hey, really, all you need is a governing body somewhere to declare that that this is the case and put their stamp on the fact that we're doing this. And we said, why not do that through the city of Cheyenne and create Cheyenne as that climate wellness and soil health capital of the universe? We're the cowboy state. We're the home of CFD. So we certainly have that agricultural side as well as a growing and progressive city on the front range. So we have that side. And so that's how the conversation started. And that's why you have the resolution sitting in front of you. So with that, I would, is John gonna do it or Jeff? Have you? We are sharing screen, I hope. And everybody can see that. We'll walk through a short presentation of kind of the nuts and bolts of this. But it would ultimately be a partnership with private company and foundation as well as the Wyoming Stock Growers and the city of Cheyenne when it when it's said and done. So John, if you're gonna take it, this is John Robitaille. I'm sure many of you know him, but he he can definitely answer a lot of the questions that you will have and he and he will as he gives his presentation. So welcome, John.
Hey, go ahead, Tom.
Maybe. We're gonna, we're gonna text John.
I got it. I'm sorry.
No, no worries.
Again, thank you for for the opportunity. In order to get us all on the same page, I think I would like Jeff Holder to just walk us through this quick little presentation. Just in a in a very quick, short, little, little introduction, if you will, Jeff.
For sure. Everybody hears me?
Yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
Great. I'll just do a flyby. You guys have seen it. You've probably looked at it, but this would be the lightning speed version of it. We're really here talking about the World Center for Climate Wellness and kind of what Dale was saying. What we're really talking about here if is climate wellness through soil health and helping Cheyenne to be the environmental hero. It's providing ESG, which I'm sure all of you are familiar with environment, social governance for corporations to say they're doing good, right? So we would be providing ESG for corporations' carbon programs, and almost all of them have one in one shape or the other. We're looking to see the opportunity to turn these programs right upside down. And it's all, of course, based on photosynthesis. Photosynthesis, it always works. It's never not worked. And the history of dirt, it's never it's never not worked, right? So see, it's photosynthesis, of course, as soil health improves, more oxygen goes out of the air, goes into the air, and carbon is pulled down as soil organic carbon into the the roots in the soil. So it actually, by increasing soil health, we decrease the carbon inside our air. So by so the linchpin is increasing the soil health. And so that's the underpinning of all of this. We have a nonprofit called Synergy for Ecological Solutions, and they raise the money for this through donations. There would be donations donations from businesses, from individuals. Then there's a group that John is representing here, Carbon Asset Network. And Carbon Asset Network then works with the ranchers. And the ranchers say, hey, I want to do different kinds of programs, more regenerative programs. I'll customize it. And then I want to enroll my acreage into this program. And the program itself is called U360. And that's that's what we're really talking about here. There's a number of of local companies that would easily readily be able to be benefiting from this kind of a program. It's easy to get our what we're talking about mixed up with typical carbon programs. So here's a side by side. I'm not going to go through all of them, but just point out U360 is based upon a donation model, whereas a typical carbon program is based upon a transaction model. I'm going to sell something called a carbon, you know, program. So so the other thing is the market value of carbon is irrelevant. Like you see, the typical carbon program on number nine, current market value of soil carbon is about fifteen to twenty dollars a metric ton, okay? But on our program, the market value isn't based upon the carbon market because we're, you know, we're seeing the U3360 model is the rancher will receive thirty acres per acre per month. And that's how you get three sixty, because over twelve months, one acre is worth three sixty. It's a simple program. The rancher and Carbon Asset Network signs an MOU, and all he's agreeing, all the ranchers agreeing to is he's going to work together to form a good plan for his land to meet his goals for what he's wanting to do that will increase soil health, which will increase carbon in the soil. It's funded. Our agron- a can's agronomist goes out to do soil testing and then consults with the landowner on what to do with his land. He's just agreeing to do the program he devises that would be able to put this money to good use to be more regenerative type of agriculture. Then for twelve months, grow grass and grow grow cattle, right? And then the once you've gone through the twelve months, we do a second round of testing. And then we see, and it's GPS pointed right exactly the same hole we went in the last time. Is there an increase in in the soil health, which does include carbon? And we're able to measure that very easily. There's a lot of people who are talking about satellite imaging. But we're really doing, and we do some of that, but really, we're boots on the ground testing, continual probe monitoring. We go out and go down a few feet into the ground to get to pull these soil samples as GPS. So it's always the exact same hole we're testing. But then this data, the the soil carbon data is transferred via blockchain. And then reports are generated based on the soil and carbon. Agwater Soil Solutions is our data company that that would would handle this kind of thing. So that's what the program is. Here's kind of how it works financially, just a quick overview. People we call change agents. It's actually donors, businesses, individuals who are saying, yeah, I want to help the climate by helping the soil. They donate money to the nonprofit. The nonprofit grants money to Carbon Asset Network. Synergy takes only about like five percent just for credit card processing and administrative fees. Carbon Asset Network pays for all the soil testing, the at the beginning and at the end, all the consulting, the agronomist time, they take twenty five percent for that. Excuse me, twenty percent for that. And then the balance is granted, the seventy percent is granted to the land stewards. And that's really just the rancher to do their work. If the landowner happens to also have oil wells on his property, then Encore Green Environmental could get involved to help with the produced water and maybe the end of the water coming back to him. But that's only if there is oil wells. And the vast majority of the acres enrolled do not have that right now. So the program starts being worked. Grass grows, the environment gets a little better, and then the whole process starts all over again. Where right now, we have seventy five, over seventy five thousand acres enrolled in the program in Wyoming. Nationally, we have about about double that. So half of our acreage is in in Wyoming. The other half is spread out amongst different different surrounding states in the West. We were able this past summer to make the first grant to Jim Halyer, some of you guys might might know him, for climate wellness or soil health. He's the first one who has actually started to execute his program based upon the consult with the agronomist. These are the soil health goals. They're just basically what you would understand to be soil health goals. It's not not rocket science. Soil health leads to climate wellness. Soil health has increased when Wyoming cattle chew, stomp, and fertilize, right? And that just leads to a lot of wins for everybody. And we would provide the logistics, including a percentage of the donations to the city. And the city of Cheyenne, we had in the PowerPoint, I just left it here. It's the PowerPoint you looked at, provide certification of protocol. But we actually, Marvin can explain this later. We actually have a different way that will to to handle that part. So this is just a model, just a quick overview of what we just said. The the testing goes in, we get a plan, the plan goes in, and ultimately, this can create a soil health token. So that's the speed version of what we got. And I'll turn it back over to John.
Thank you, Jeff. That was a pretty quick overview, but it does give you an idea of what we're talking about here today. I'm sure that you all have many questions, and and I think we'll just take up the remainder of the meeting with a question answer period.
Okay, we first talked about this, I guess, in January at our goal setting session when we were looking at new revenue. And Tom Seagrave, Councilman Seagrave, he was the first councilman that approached us about doing this. Is he available there?
I sure am.
Okay, now, does any other councilman have any or councilwoman have any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Yes, maybe through you. I don't know if John's the right person or Jeff, but please explain again what it is specifically you're asking the city or the city council to do. I've read the resolution. I believe I've shared that with everybody. But what is it exactly that that we're doing to benefit this program?
John, you want me to take that? This is Marvin.
Sure.
I think that's probably probably the best segue into what our what our option is right now, Marvin.
Yeah, that it's it's the resolution that we put before you. And I guess I spend a lot of time trying to simplify complicated issues. The the simple thought process for Encore Green and stuff was when somebody gets ready to build a building or a house or whatever in the city of Cheyenne, they go to Western R and D or a researcher or an engineering firm or somebody, and they bring the plans and the plans get a seal of approval. And at some point in time, then the engineering company gets the city and they put their stamp on it or the state or whatever agencies have to do that. And they put their stamp of approval on it, and then it goes forward. We're just talking about the same thing for carbon assets for a need for climate wellness. So our protocol is followed, our agronomist has done all the approvals. Even when we started, and I'll throw Western R and D's name out there, Lou Harmon and them, they helped us get a seal of approval to satisfy the the needs for the DEQ when we started in our water business. And I realized that transparency was extremely important. You have to be transparent on these type of issues. So basically, what we're looking for from the city would be they look at what we've had our engineers and our agronomists and everybody approve. And then they in turn, just like when they release somebody to build a building, they say, yeah, they've met the protocol. One of the changes that has happened just in the last two weeks or three weeks is our our engagement more extensively with with blockchain. Because once this data goes to blockchain, then it can't be tampered with. And so by using the blockchain, that allowed us the opportunity for a a token, which is kind of a big deal right now. And it allowed us, as Dale said earlier, to actually facilitate what everybody's been looking for. So the the main resolution is, whereas 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 at the end of the day, there is an approval of the protocol, similar to an engineering, you know, the Department of Engineering for the city giving approval for a building. And and then it goes to the blockchain from there, and everything goes forward. So the ask would be to work with the city on those approvals. If that doesn't come about, there there are other options, but that's the the first ask. And I think that would simplify the process. And and it would be Wyoming, it would be the city of Cheyenne basically saying this city understands the need for climate wellness. If the bakey was here and we were talking about heart surgery, or we were talking about any other type of wellness, it it's the kind of thing that people engage in. As Dale very eloquently said, just because of the politics of climate, there there gets to be a lot of concern. We want to just step back from the politics. We're not in the politics. Photosynthesis has always worked. Let's protocol it. Let's identify it. Let's stamp it. And and let's engage in creating more more of those kind of things. So that that's the ask.
Mr. Chairman, if I could follow up?
Go ahead, Tom.
So Marvin, basically, what we would be saying is, we have reviewed your program. And we agree that your program is, for lack of a better word, legitimate. And the city of Cheyenne certifies that what you're doing to improve soil health is good. Is that basically it?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, yes. And Tom, I'm sorry, I'm not who's talking there.
Tom.
Tom, yeah. But and and let's probably not use the word certify. We probably would go with the word verify.
Verify.
A certification, it would be a verification. You know, I I've been for the last year, I've been to all the oil and gas meetings, all the agriculture meetings. And and the word verification brings stability to the the Microsofts, the Exons, the Shells, the, you know, anybody that has emissions, the the verification of what's being done. So yes, I would, I would probably go with the word verify. But whichever word you choose, that you you've nailed it. That's what we'd be looking for.
I think I can simplify that even further for these guys. So if you think about what we do with federal government, say, the federal government releases grants, right? We've just had that with everything that's going gone on through COVID, right? And so they say there are some grants that the city of out there for application. But really, you can only apply for them if you're a city, a county, a town, or, you know, a government agency across the US. So this is what kind of the federal government does. When I'm a when I'm a company, a say I'm a, you know, a Black Hills Energy or somebody else that has carbon issues that I want to solve. And the government often requires that I show that ESG, that governance for good, and that I am moving forward with climate health, and I've got a plan for dealing with carbon in my company. When I go forward as a company, they just say, well, that's great, except for the fact that how do we know? That's just you. So it's basically a governmental agency of any kind. Their name on that gives it the credibility that is needed to be able to work through that process moving forward, both with the public and with other governmental agencies.
Thank you, Dale. Mr. Chairman, I know we have attorney Alessandra's on the on the call. Alessandra, through you, Mr. Chairman Alessandra, what what are your thoughts at this point? Alessandra? Maybe she maybe she's not on the call anymore. Like, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, we'll give her a minute, see if she comes on. See, the mayor's there. Maybe he might want to follow up with that.
I think Dr. Aldrich had a question.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go to Dr. Aldrich.
I thank you, Chairman Escobar. I just, my question is, in the presentation, and I know it was just a brief overview that you just did, it talked primarily about cattle producers. And I'm just wondering if it's just cattle, or if it would be all livestock like the yak herds and the llamas and the camels all the other herds we have going on the sheet.
Yeah, very, very good question, Doctor. And and the simple answer is, we learned after we started, there's three million acres of golf courses. Okay, that's that's a prime place to do carbon capture for for climate wellness. Every city has parks. The city of Cheyenne has a few acres out here on the west side of town. There are separate and different protocols for each situation. And so the the answer to your question is, you might improve your parks, which would increase carbon capture, which would increase climate wellness. So Dale kept telling me in this year or so that we've been working on this, chambers across the United States and and cities are looking to help improve these things to offer businesses coming to their town to raise their hand and say, and by the way, we can help you with an ESG protocol. But it's not just agriculture. It's any, any, we actually, in our crazy mind of how could we do this? We actually, in our token thought process, if you have a yard, you could put your grass in your yard, and you could do a test. We could do a test. And next year, we could come back to see if you improve your carbon capture in your yard. So we're looking at this as a wellness approach of, you know, let's do the cholesterol test. Let's do the exercising. Let's do the walking. Let's, what can we do to improve? Most programs have been, let's decrease cars on the road. Let's decrease, you know, CO2 going into the air. Let's decrease, decrease, decrease. We just looked at it and and I I sometimes apologize for my cowboy methodologies, but I'm getting to the point where I'm not going to apologize for it. We just looked at it as a common sense, down to earth, grassroots approach, pardon the pun. How can we improve to improve our wellness? And and I watched the, I watched all the climate meetings extensively. You know, I I watched all the inconsistencies and and the the inability to make a decision. And I thought, this is crazy. Let's improve through climate wellness. So it's actually any place that they grow anything. And it's actually places that they don't grow anything. Can we improve that growth process? And and so that that's, that's what it's all about. Yeah, we just had, you know, it's easy to go get ten thousand acres here and, you know, five thousand acres there, twenty thousand acres over here. And that's where a lot of the chatter had been about. But but it's not when we think we make this municipality connection, all of a sudden, like I say, we bring golf courses, we bring football fields, we bring parks. We bring all of those type of activities to the conversation.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. I would just note, for any of you that didn't have a chance to attend the last three days or two days of the governor's business forum, that this was the topic for the first entire day of his business forum, was carbon capture and emissions and that type of thing. So some really good information coming out of that, something we you might want to take a look at reviewing if you have a chance.
Mr. Chairman, if I may help with that question. If if we go back in time, this country was covered with buffalo. And the the grass that they were grazing really evolved to to a point where when you cut that grass off at the top, the response of that grass. The response of that grass is to grow outwards and then upwards again. In doing so, when we cut the grass using a grazing animal or, or in, in Marvin's example, a lawnmower. When we cut that grass, that grass expands. And as it expands, it expands its root system. As the root systems expand, so does the potential for soil carbon to actually expand. As a, as that plant pulls in the carbon dioxide, it's converting it to a carbohydrate and storing it in its root. That's the whole basis of this. That's why we, when we talk about grazing. Yes, we, we use the example of cattle, but, but truly anything that can cut that, the top of that grass off. Will force that, that plant to expand itself and grow laterally. And thus improve its root systems, which also then would improve its carbon capture capabilities. So I hope that answered your question.
See Councilman Cook had his hand up. You still got a question, Brian?
I do. Yes, Mr. Chair, if I, if I may, and, and I'll let the folks there in the room decide who, who wants to answer it. But I guess, so I, I don't know a whole lot about your, your processes, you know, to, to be completely honest, right? I mean, I, so I'm speaking, you know, basically as a, as a layperson, but. I don't remember which gentleman I was eating my lunch at the time. So I didn't see which one of you was, was speaking about, you know, the wording that, that we're using, whether it's certifying or verifying. And it sounds like verifying is, is verifying your processes, so to speak. And I'm just looking at the, at the whereas, where it says, on the proposed resolution where it says. Well, I wish we could, I wish we could scroll up a little bit on that, but the, the, the last one I can see, whoa, 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 whoa. Thank you. Let's see. I guess I'm just, I'm just saying how the, the whereas that, that speaks to Carbon Asset Network as a scientifically dependable and repeatable protocol. For the soil evaluation and carbon sequestration. So I guess what, maybe this is a question for Dale or maybe the mayor. So what research, I mean, how do we know that? I'm, I mean, I'm assuming we're certainly not taking this, this company's word for that. So how do we? How do we know that? I, I mean, I guess, and I don't mean to sound callous with that, but again. If we as a municipality are taking the step by passing this resolution and saying, hey, you know, we, we verify these guys are, are doing good things, which I'm assuming you are. How do we, how do we as, as laypeople, you know, what, where, where, what are we basing our, our, our decision on? What, what research have we done on our end? Whether that be the chamber or the, the administration to, to say, hey, yeah, you know, we are comfortable with this. It's, it's legit.
So I, I think a couple of things there. I'll let somebody else address part of it. But what I would say is I, I think that's why Marvin was talking about the. Talking about the definition on verification, right? We're not, we're not asking the city to come in and retain a scientist to make sure that the. The, the approach is sound, right? I mean, at the end of the day, this is not complicated science, right? What, what we're asking the city to do is really at the end of the day, say. What said was going to get done, got done, right? So, I mean, there isn't anybody sitting here that's going to make that decision either. These are, the agronomist has to go out and work for, work with the, the, the ranchers or the city if they did it with a golf course. Whoever lay out a plan of attack. And I promise you, the way agriculture goes, not every one of those will be successful, right? So some of them, some of them won't. And you're depending on Mother Nature to make that happen too. But what you're betting on is that. Over time, those best management practices that, and those scientists know about. Will, will come into play. And from the city's point of view, you're saying, yep, these guys are working toward good soil health and they continue that work. Right? You're, you're not guaranteeing any specific results.
And, and thank you for that answer, Dale. Mr. Chair, through you, just, just a response to that. And I, I appreciate that, Dale. And, and that's, you know, I. Like I said, and, and you know me pretty well, obviously. I, I just, I'm glad you said that. At, at the end of the day, you, you know, personally that I, you know, I look at it as. You know, anything that the, that the city, you know, puts its name on, right? You know, we just, we have to properly, properly vet it. So that's. Again, that's, that's all I'm.
And let.
I'm asking with that, so.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask, ask a, add a little bit more of a, a scientific answer to that part of it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. So, so very quickly, we, we have an agronomist. We go through a protocol. Most of the companies, Indigo, Nary, Nori, all of those different things, they try to do the cheap thing out. They try to fly over or take. NASA imagery and say, hey, we've got carbon captured at three inches or four inches. We realized that that wasn't satisfactory. So we actually have an agronomist drives out, takes samples. Six inches, 12 inches, 18, 24 is all the way down. Then that soil goes to a certified lab. Then the results from that soil comes back. We GPS, and this is one of the big, big points of security to make sure we're doing it properly. We GPS those testing points. And then when we come back next year, we test in exactly the same place. To make sure that we're getting that in, increase or decrease, whichever it might be, at that specific location. And so that's what we've done entirely different than a lot of the other people that have tried to do this or have talked about doing it. We then put that on the blockchain, which was huge, because nobody had figured out how to do that just yet. We put that data on the blockchain. So if you have township section range and you tested 1,000 acres or, or, or five acres. That data went to the blockchain. Nobody can tamper with that data because of its stability being in the blockchain. So to, to your point, it, it was extremely necessary to be able to have scientific backed data. For what we were doing. A lot of people had accomplished that. They had not been able to. House and keep up with volumes of data to make that happen. And so that's, that's what we did different than everybody else. And then we just realized, like Dale had said, you know, working with a city would, would benefit the city as well as benefit the climate wellness. Yeah, but not asking the city to verify. They, they, just like when, when an engineering firm brings you a, a plan and they say, this is it. And the city guy says, yep, and puts their seal on it to, to verify that they did the, the legwork to make sure that. We hope the building's going to be like we say the building's going to be. It, it's all done and taken care of. So we just kind of followed that model to make sure that, that everything was verifiable. Understanding that the question that you just asked is, is imminent to be asked and is paramount that it be satisfied.
Got any other follow up, Councilman Cook on that?
I, I will, probably, depending on what Mr. Johnson's questions are, but at, at this point, Mr. Chair, I don't think.
Okay, we'll go to Councilman Johnson.
Okay, excuse me, what? Hopefully you guys can hear me. Can you hear me okay right now?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. I'm going to go to my text messages real fast, so hopefully I don't drop off. Okay, so in regards to this, I don't know a lot about this topic. So I asked somebody who is actually qualified to do this. So really, it's a series of comments in regards to a text thread with one final question. So what they're, when it says they are talking about susque, susque, I can't even say the word, sorry. Carbon in the soil through the roots of grasses planted in grazed lands. There are some other techniques to maximize soil carbon, soil organic matter in that system. For example, no-till methods of planting that essentially drill seeds into the ground or cover crop rotations will certainly, will these methods be promoted? Then it goes on, another thought is rancher farmer education on soil health, part of this program, because understanding. Soil organic matter and maximizing carbon storage in that way is negated by use of chemical fertilizer. For example, using chemical fertilizers speeds up soil microbes that degrade soil organic matter and also degrade soil structure over time. So I wonder if they are going to go out and just sample all these rain, rangelands and pasture lands for the amount of carbon they susque, susquester, sorry. Is that enough to call it a climate hero program without any explanation to the ranchers? And then they followed up, that basically said, there's also the University of Wyoming Extension Agents. Who would really actually offer as neutral consultants to this. And it looks like, the, basically with this being a private entity, helping the ranching industry to establish a perception of high. Carbon sequestration rate for the industry. And so basically what they were asking for is, you know, kind of the city just to kind of take a step back. And actually reach out to a neutral, non-governmental body like the UW Extension Program. To see if actual soil health and climate specialists on the extension team there, and basically work with them. And so I guess, because this topic is so different than most of that we take on with resolutions. I guess, does, is the city looking to actually, like typically when we put things out for bid and things like that. You know, where we have other offers coming in instead of a resolution that we're just going to go with this specific agency. Should this have actually been put out for a bid? Should this have actually been approved as a contract more so than a resolution of support? Going into like even your carbon capture things, like you mentioned with the golf courses and things, I know that we had some issues when it was, when we were doing core samples. When we did the Civic Center Commons, because there was gas stations and things that used to be on that property that, when we were looking at. When we were doing our coring in the Civic Center Commons, for example, we were wondering, you know, how DEQ was going to come back on us in regards to the things we found. And so I guess I'm a little bit apprehensive about doing a resolution. Instead of more of a bid process and a contract, like it would typically sound like we were doing it, then you would have. The city council or governing bodies support, because we would actually approve the contract, which had, would have ability to do modifications and things. So I would rather see this go out to a, a bid process than I guess, seeing it done through a resolution.
You, you and John can handle that. I'm going to tackle part of that. So one thing is, I don't know who you're getting your texts from, but perhaps part of science class they missed. Because some of what they say is really just not exactly the facts. But let me, I, I think it'd be great to send this out for bid. And this is the only company, this would be the first of its kind in the United States. So the cool thing about what these guys are trying to do is solve a problem that nobody else has been able to solve, right? So certainly I think you, you know, you talk about the extension guys, they've been involved as the, the Wyoming stock growers have, have been involved. So this hasn't been done in a, in a vacuum. They have gone and talked to the governor. They, they have talked to elected officials all over the state. Certainly Jim McGagnon is involved every time a, every, every time a pin drops at the legislature related to agriculture, he, he isn't involved. And I, I think the key to this is we're trying to solve a problem, not only for ranchers. I am a rancher and one of the, you know, the thing I work on every day, what do I do? I grow grass. How do I grow more grass that captures carbon? I mean, that's, that's the way the system works. So I, I think if there's somebody else out there that had, had done this, that, that, that would be fine. And, and to, and to be frank, and you know, I'm certain that we can get another governmental entity to do this. However, it was a good opportunity for, for, for Cheyenne. I mean, the State University of Wyoming talks about it all the time. They've been trying to figure it out for six years. So private businesses figured out something that the government side has not been able to figure out. And that's why this is a pretty, pretty unique situation. And it makes you money and you make money off of it. And I'm doubtful that.
And if I could expand on that just a little bit. So Dale brought up a good point of private business. If you know agriculture, elections happen every four years. Every time elections happen, agricultural programs change. If you go and talk to a group of farmers and they want to talk about the set aside programs or the NRCS. They can get a hundred thousand dollars for seed, but they can't get forty thousand dollars for the piece of equipment required to put the seed into the ground. So we evaluated, we have evaluated all of the, the points that prevent. Climate wellness from taking place in the way that we would like to see it. You, you brought up some really, really good points, but the reason we're doing this from a private enterprise system. Is because the government cannot seem to make it go forward. Because of so many regulations and, and stipulations and, and those kinds of things. And so after we evaluated, we said, wait a minute, we have to be able to allow. Companies and agriculturists and landowners and, and, and golf parks and everybody else. A pathway to introduce and implement a protocol. All of the things that your person told you about, they are all out there on the table. They are part of a protocol. We allow that individual to look at and say, will this protocol work for you? And can we help fund that so that you can do it? One of the biggest challenges is funding of improved protocol and improved processes. Your gentleman, or whoever wrote that brought up a lot of really good points, but what they left out is, when you go to the NRCS, when you go to the USDA. They do not have a streamlined path to success. It's not that they don't have knowledge, they just do not have a streamlined judiciary path to be successful. And unfortunately or fortunately, we have seen with COVID, how sometimes things can move faster. When we went to private companies and said, we have an emergency, we need this, can you help us? And we made that happen. I'm here to tell you, we have a climate wellness emergency. That, that's not a joke. That's a fact. You take, you take my buddy over there in California and you put all those cars on his freeway trying to go to work. And you have all those emissions going into the air and you have a problem. And we've talked to California and California is, we're actually engaged with some ranchers to help improve that soil health, to improve climate wellness. So those are all good points, but our, our main focus is where can free enterprise, government. And soil health providers all come together to expedite the process. And so that, I, I hope that addresses your concern, but very good questions, a very good comment.
Okay, I basically told them to listen in on your meeting. I forwarded them all your data that you had sent to council. Because I knew nothing on this topic. So I actually will confer with them after this work session, because. I did ask them to tune in and listen, because they are an expert in their field where I am not.
Sure, very good.
Mr. Chairman, to answer those questions directly. Yes, cover crops, no-till drills, very important to us. Any type of regenerative agriculture is very important to us. The reason that we take physical soil samples, whereas others try to use maps or imaging. We take the physical soil samples to actually see what the microbes are doing. And then we, we turn that report around and ask the landowner, what exactly are you trying to accomplish here? And how can we help you? If, if that is something of weed eradication. Then we look at that. If, if it has to do with some type of a rotational grazing system, then we look at that. It's, it's very specific to the landowner. And so the, the question regarding the chemical. The chemical fertilizer, while a good one. Yes, we recognize that, but we also recognize that by testing the soil physically. We can actually get a much better handle on what's happening in that soil and, and what those microbes themselves are doing is we don't want to damage them.
Hey, do we have any other questions from any members of council? Richard, you still have your hand up?
No, that's what I was actually going to go try to take down.
Okay. I got one then. So in the Carbon Asset Network, those 127,000 acres. There's, there hasn't been a governing body that's done a resolution like this yet?
No, we've never, we've never asked a governing body to, to do anything like this. And if I probably wasn't a resident of Cheyenne and didn't live here and hadn't had some conversations with Dale. And then the mayor was nice enough to give us an opportunity to entertain the idea. I probably wouldn't be having this conversation in, in the first place. The, the question that just came up about, you know, putting it out for bid. We see every day the roadblocks that are standing in the way of climate wellness. We, we saw it overseas when they were trying to have a climate carbon conference and get everybody on the same page. And that did not happen. So we were thinking possibly there is a pathway, instead of going bigger, to step back and say to a community, this is an opportunity. And, and so that's why we came to the, to the city of Cheyenne. Uh, you know, they're, they're very forward-thinking, you know, they have quite a few acres. They, they need to try to figure out, uh, income to, to improve all of that. We thought this would be a, an applicable way without another penny increase in tax dollars. You know, those kind of things that would allow you so. So we haven't asked anybody else to do this. Uh, just one final point, I've been on a listening tour for about the last 12 months to listen to all of major corporations, Oxy, BP, Exxon, uh, just huge corporations talk about these things. And in Jackson, month and a half ago at the technology conference, one of the academia made this comment. We have prevented progress by looking for perfection. And until we're ready to take that step and know that we're doing the right thing, and there will be concerns, we will not have the progress that we need. And, and I, and I don't want to get on a soapbox, but if, if we're, if, if we're really serious about climate wellness and helping our kids and our grandkids, I mean, y'all have the Purple Pipe Program in Wyoming, in Cheyenne. And that Purple Pipe, uh, Lou Harmon and I have had hours of conversation about, how could we take that Purple Pipe Program? Because you have residents that have 10, 12, 15, 20 acres. How could we use that water to improve soil health, to improve climate wellness? Well, if you just got one guy with 12 acres, it's no big deal. But what if I got 10 guys with 12 acres? Now I improved 120 acres. So, so the ask is, the thought process was, instead of going to the national federal government, which has not been able to do this, let's take one community. We just happen to live here in Cheyenne, so we thought we'd start here.
Well, uh, just to follow up, after our work session in January, Councilman Seagraven, we are talking about the Belvoir Ranch and, uh, how many, uh, communities are there that actually own a ranch? And, uh, we thought that, you know, we would, this would be a good thing for us to look at, especially since we do have the Belvoir and we're looking at ways to raise revenue. So moving forward, uh, I think it's a great topic. Uh, we don't know a lot about it yet, but I think moving forward, that, uh, resolution be a good start. Mr. Mayor, uh, do you have any final words? We never did get a, hear from Alexandra.
Uh, I think she's on the, the line now, so, uh, Alessandra, if you're there, uh, Mr. Seagrave asked if you had any thoughts from a legal perspective on, uh, this proposal?
Sure, this is Alessandra Fegelman from the city attorney's office. Um, you know, I, I don't, I have seen this resolution, um, before, I think maybe eight weeks ago and didn't really see any issues with it. Maybe we could come up with some language that wasn't certifying or something that council would feel more comfortable with. But I, I mean, at my first read, I didn't see any big concerns. Thank you.
Hey, um, do any other members of council?
Mr. Chairman, I would just tell you, I think this is an opportunity for us to show some leadership on, uh, I think a very important, um, issue, you know, that's facing our, uh, our community and, and our world. And so, um, again, I, I, I appreciate what Mr. Cook was saying about the fact that, uh, I took eighth grade general science and I understand generally the concept, but I'd say that's the end of my, uh, my expertise here. Uh, but I have a lot of faith in the folks who have come before us. And, uh, I think if we get this started, maybe it'll start a wave that, uh, um, can make a difference.
It's always good to be the first, uh, thank you for those comments, Mr. Mayor. Any other members of council got any other questions? Well, hearing none, go ahead and adjourn the work session. We got a lot of information here in a short period of time. Gentlemen, thank you for, uh, coming to us and letting us look at this resolution moving forward. I'm sure we'll have a plenty of spirited debate going forward as well.
Thank you for allowing us this opportunity. It's, it's a, it's a great opportunity, uh, and we really, uh, appreciate just being able to sit down with your, with the council. And, and, and you know, throughout the last month or two, I've told some people, yeah, we're going to have a work session in other parts of the United States, and they were like, wow, that, that is just unbelievable that somebody is taking it that serious. That, that's a great thing.
Yeah, uh, we had a number of councilmen that weren't here. Uh, we'll be talking to them here in the next couple of weeks too, about this work session as they get a chance to, uh, do an overview, uh, both the PowerPoint and the work session. And, uh, we'll see what they have to say, but, uh, I feel positive about it going forward, as does the mayor. I would echo his comments. So thank you, and we are adjourned.